Good evening, parents. Good evening, faculty. Good evening, everyone in the audience. Thank you for coming tonight to this school board meeting. Tonight, we have Arbor Elementary School. Student presentation is meant as a collaboration of a project between Arbor and King Intermediate Schools. Students in contained classes at both schools got together at Arbor to work on projects relating to the book, Wild Robot. And here is Arbor's principal, Ethel O'Donnell, to tell us more.
Good evening, and thank you for welcoming us here tonight. With us tonight includes students from both Arbor and Martin Luther King, who were able to participate in a collaborative project that brought the two schools together. With King students taking two field trips to Arbor in order to be able to work with our students all together. The opportunity was made possible through the collaboration of the classroom teachers. This is Magrino, Mrs. Carrabinos, and Mrs. Hall, as well as Ms. Reyes, who is the speech and language therapist for both schools. Tonight, to introduce a video documenting the project, we have Arbor students Zem Said and Omari Wilson.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight to talk about our project with Wild Robot. The Wild Robot is about a robot named Roz who walks, who wakes up alone after a shipwreck. But over time, Roz learns how to survive in the wild and make friends with the animals. She even becomes a mother to a baby goose. It's a story about kindness, survival, and belonging.
After we read the book, we met with students from Martin Luther King, who also read it. Together, we brainstormed, designed what our group's ideal robot would be. We found prototypes, and they created posters that included features we all agreed on. The best part of the project was meeting new people and spending time with other friends from other classes. We hope you enjoy the video of our project.
To Arbor's school. I watched the Wild Robot.
Our robot's name is pronounced Bearba. He looks like a bear and is made of golden diamond.
Bearba's job is to cook and clean. He has a tail as a roof to sweep up the floor. Bearba can cook about anything he asks him to cook, but also to the nature he asks him to do.
He can play games with you, too. He has sharp claws and claws that are so flat.
He can do cleaning, but he has feelings. He can be sad when the floor is messy. He will be happy when everything's cleaned or his cars are finished.
Our robot's special features is a bird in the tail, kitchen tools for cooking, tools for repairs, wings for flying.
Our robot's name is Atlas.
Atlas's job is to destroy enemies.
Now, let's bring your report.
Our robot has wings, eyes, rung, ears, different teeth. And a hood. He has two jump legs. He turns 165 degrees.
Our robot's features might be just our cool, nice, friendly. She also is dangerous.
Hi, my name is Kevin, and this is Troy. Our robot's name is Elliot. Five days, nine zero. We cleaned up the ocean store garbage ship.
He uses a net, rocket ropes, and then he makes metal. He can swim fast. He helps save C and M in trouble.
There we have a beautiful and golden master. He is King Black. I was one back there. The Wild Robot has been speaking for 10 nine years. I don't understand if you speak Spanish or Philippine for some reason. I'm probably supposed to be saying something beside the money and the name.
King's Mountain, Jack's Peak, places and explore areas to be casual.
Our robot has wings. Voice box, eyes, rockets, fingers, and a nap.
Our robot's name is Tom the Farmer. Our robot's knowledge and growth measure was on a farm. The tools he used are made, shown, and seen in a home. Tom the Farmer is made of gold.
Tom the Farmer lives in a farm near border. Tom the Farmer loves a son that can brood and sell them for money. Tom, Tom's arms can change with any different tool.
Tom is a robot called the robot.
Robot's name is Robin. Robin's job is to help people in the neighborhood. Her tools are swords and a blow in her arm. She is very cool.
Lily has an on and off button. This allows her to have X-ray vision and become invisible.
Our robot's having an emotion change. It's hopeful, different, and calm.
Our robot is a machine. They use someone in the US and then move.
Robot's brain is Funbot. Its job is to help people and destroy bonus sprung cakes. Funbot is made out of iron. It can deploy groundworks, rail, pier, and tow. Funbot is a protective robot.
Liam, what did you like about Liam's report to Arbor?
We saw Sally and making friends. We saw old friends, too.
What was your favorite part of the robot project?
I have a few favorites. One of them would be hanging out with all my friends from third grade. I got to see Miguel, Abdul, Justine, Jordan, Edgar. I got to see all of them. Everyone remembers me, but everyone else. Another favorite was making the entire robot. It was really interesting how everyone had different ideas for it.
So good.
It really was.
Well, one, I want to tell all of you students how proud I am of you. Your personalities got to shine. Yeah, I got your personality. You definitely are a spokesperson. You have no problem with expressing yourself. But what I liked most about it, what you were saying, and you wanted us from the heart, and it was specialness to your friends who you had seen, and you guys went to two different schools. So that really touched my heart. Because my kids were in special education, this is why I know most of these teachers who are sitting out there, because I've had interactions and dealings with them over the years. They've had some of my good kids, and they've had some of my challenging kids. But at the end of the day, they... Look, let's be honest about this. Some of them are challenging. But at the end of the day, they all were able to find their identity in those classrooms. And most importantly, they were able to grow. So right now, I'm getting ready to come up. And we're going to present to each student a certificate of appreciation and recognition for the job well done with collaborating with both schools and creating all the interesting, diverse robots that you guys designed and the functions that they serve. So now I'm going to come to the front, and Ethel O'Donnell is going to be presenting each one of you with a certificate. And when you come up, she's going to give you a certificate. Our photographer back there, he's going to want to take your picture. So you're going to get your certificate, you're going to say wah-wah. And then take the picture. And then you're going to stay up here, because then we're going to take a group picture together. And then all the parents can take a picture. So we're going to have to have our patience, because we're not pants. We're a little older, we're a little slower. So you guys got all the energy and get ready for this. Okay, we got the assignment. All right, we'll do it. Pose. Turn around, get your pose.
Stay there, stay there.
Jen, you want to go right over by Tommy? There you go. Abdul Ahmad? Cheese! Good job. Cheese!
So good.
Zem Said? Omari Wilson?
Excellent.
Thank you. Liam Sanchez Morales?
Nice, Liam! I'm ready.
At your fingertips.
He says no.
Justine Fernando? Conrad Jackson? Okay, now we're going to get a group picture. So parents, get your phones out, get your cameras ready, zoom in. Get back to see this path. Don't bother, we don't have rules here. Okay, hold up your screen, but not the front. You just want to lower it so that you can see your face.
You can't see Charlie, you can't see him.
Justine Lethal, honey, you can't see him.
That's right, that's right.
Everybody look over here and smile.
Cheese and cheese! Cheese!
Me, too. This is really awesome. Thank you guys so much. You all, like I say, I'm impressed with you all. I love all of you guys. Your robots, I'm going to get a picture of all your robots, and I'm going to make it my screensaver so that I can look good and remember you coming here tonight. Parents, thank you again for the job you're doing for the community. And most importantly, for their support and showing them that they, too, have a voice, and they do everything that everybody else do, but in their own path. Because like I say, I have four kids who had IEPs. Mr. Montgomery, Mrs. Magrino, and all of them had my kids. Like I said, I pray for them in your day, but it's okay. Again, thank you for coming this evening and get home safely.
See you tomorrow, Leo. Bye, Justin. See you tomorrow. Bye, Jordan. Bye, Justin.
All right, let's try to get a group picture.
That's Omari Tuta, you remember her? Do you remember seeing her before?
No, I don't think we've met before.
Do you think they look alike? She looks more like his mom. She looks like her dad.
That's your sister.
And her sister looks like her. And maybe Cameron will look like them.
Remote control is not going to be able to move.
She makes faces. Like, she just do that? I see his. Oh, yes, they want a real quick picture with the teachers.
She keeps coming out.
Okay, rolling right along. It's time for us. Okay, no problem, take your time, babe. Okay, next on the agenda, we have our student representative report. Representative. I'm not sure, Tommy, I'm sure you noticed our, or is Tyler starting today? Okay, so we have our junior representative Tyler West started with our student representative's report. Thank you and welcome tonight, Tyler.
So first off, today, our SAD club did a chalk the walk. And that was basically art club, and we brought up the art club to go out in the front of the school. And we wrote meaningful and thoughtful messages with chalk on the ground just to push our students to make good decisions and to stay safe while they're driving on the road. And they could just look at that while they're walking into school. It just goes a good way. And as they're reading the school to make good decisions. And continuing with our SAD club, yesterday, we went on a field trip to a tow trucking company and to the police department. At the tow trucking company, we went, and it's the company where all the crime scene cars go to. It's cars that are involved in crashes. Again, so we could see to make a decision to pay attention while we're on the road and not make, do things like texting while we're driving and end up in situations like that. So we saw some of those stuff. And then we would go to the police station, where we got a tour of the police station. We did a simulator that would simulate us drunk driving again to teach us not to do those things. And the results that can happen if you do those things. And moving on, we, our Fifty Strong Club, part of the Chiefs for Christ, and they went on a trip to the Community Food Bank of Jersey, where they packaged food to be delivered to the homeless shelters across North Jersey, which was also the Escada. And again, with our Fifty Strong program, they're starting a mentor program where they would choose kids to go to elementary schools and talk to the kids about whatever they need to talk about, whether it be personal or school, play games with them, and just give the kids a fun time. Right now, we're in the process of doing mentoring for, excuse me, we're doing training for the mentoring, which I'm being a part of right now. So we plan on getting two dates this year to go to elementary schools and test it out, see how the program goes. If it goes well, we hope to continue with next year and the years following that and so on. And moving on, for students that want to pursue science in the real world, outside of the classroom, our Science National Honor Society is hosting an interest meeting on April 21st for upcoming sophomores and juniors who love science. And on April 25th, our school is hoping, hosting a flag football game for parents versus teachers. So it's just another nice event for families and people in the community to come out and watch, have fun, play a session game. Yes. And just have fun. And on April 28th, will be the start of NJSLA test game for freshmen and juniors. And best news for last spring break is next week. So students will have a great time to relax and get prepared for the last push to get to the school year.
Good, awesome. Thanks, Tyler.
I just have a question. The mentoring that you guys are doing with the club, what was the grade levels that you guys are going to be mentoring?
We're doing all of, excuse me, elementary school levels. So on through first grade, through third grade, and then there's kids at the school that have been chosen that we will be mentoring.
Okay. Now, was that going to be all the members of Fifty Strong or only a select group of individuals who are going to train them to be mentors?
So it's Fifty Strong's mentors that mentor their students. They pick students out there, and then also some students just in the school that they think would be a good fit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tyler. So happy spring. It's a really exciting time of the year. We're almost done. So on that note, college decisions are coming out very soon. Actually, they have come out. So I know you're all in anticipation, so I will keep you posted as soon as I formalize my decision. No, it was not the time. It was happening? Okay, well, I have an idea, so I can share that, actually. Just because Dr. Lam is wearing his lucky socks. Okay, so I won't make my announcement. So I most likely will be committing to Rowan University and Club for a seven-year medical program that I'm here to use me a spot in med school. So I'm set for the next seven years of my life. My MCAT is low, I just have to maintain my GPA, so officially going to be a doctor. Thank you. So I am very, very excited. I visited this weekend, and it's a really good program, so very excited about that. So, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. So on that note, decisions are still coming out, and we are all actively stalking the PWA Committee's Instagram to see where all the students are going. So that's a really exciting time of the year. With that note, also EPs are going on, so EKMOC exams have started. All preparations, I myself have taken four EPs, so that's all I've been doing. That's it, Jen, so don't do that, Tyler, but it's okay. So yeah, so that's going on. That'll be all of May, and then we're finally done. So Tyler mentioned the SAD event, chalk the walk. I just want to recognize Dr. Roberto for coming today and blessing us and, you know, meeting us all and showing her enthusiasm for events. It was really fun, like Tyler mentioned. And again, we're really enthusiastic about SAD. As well as tomorrow, Tyler and I are actually going on a field trip to the elementary schools to talk about SAD and just safety around driving, although obviously they're very early on. But just kind of get spread out the safety message and just engage them in a very active way. So that should be exciting. The ICCA, which is the International Cultural Club here at the high school, is hosting their annual lantern night on Friday, May 2nd, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. I believe last year they were planning to do it, but due to, I think, the rain, it somehow got canceled, unfortunately. So it should be a good hit. A lot of talk about that. As well as the ICCA heat show, which is on April 30th. I'm sorry, auditions are on April 30th. I don't believe they released the actual date of the event, but students are looking forward to that. I will say it's usually May, I think, actually, May 4th. So that's something to, you know, celebrate and recognize other people's cultures. Hosa, the med club at the high school, is hosting their third annual million-dollar match volleyball game, which is a huge hit at the high school. So on May 21st at 6:00 to 8:30 p.m., and we'd love to invite you all to show up as well. It's really, really hyped. I mean, I've been there. I actually emcee, so I will be emceeing again this year. So, thank you. It is very exciting. And also Woodbridge Academy, as well as I think South Pinfield will be coming as well to talk about, not talk about, play the, and the actual game. So hopefully, this gathered lens this year. As well as the spring edition of the student newspaper, The Chieftain, has been published online. I know the students, they're working very hard on that, and, you know, they're always trying to get the news. So that's something that you all can check out in your pretend as well. Going on the end of March, although it was April finally, poetry, March Madness, the competition that all the English classes were participating in, has finally ended. I know personally in my EP Lit and I think maybe Lang, I think all English classes were engaging in that, and we would just go on which poem they liked for the month. So it's a good way to kind of get poetry out there and spread some news of that. The Day of Dialogue Committee is once again promoting their event, their project, Irish New Project, which we all focus on collecting students' voices and identities and voicing how they're feeling. So that's something that's going on. Submissions are due April 23rd, so we're really pushing for that. I know we're doing table and events. And just kind of recognizing as we're participating in a competition, which will actually be in the end of this month. So that's something to look forward to as well.
That's the day of, the day of dialogue?
Yes, the, yep, the competition. It's for the government, I don't remember the exact name, but it's with the New Jersey government that we actually go to a conference later in the year, actually. I think it's May. FBLA, I know I mentioned this last meeting, the Mission Life basketball game was a huge hit, as always, a really big event here at the high school. They raised about $5,000 for the Embrace Kids Foundation, which is an organization dedicated to helping families' children that are battling sickle cell disease and cancer. So it's very, very important. I was there, SAD, we did halftime as well. And we had people trying the drunk goggles and do basketball hoops, which went as well as it could have. So it was really fun as well. Tyler mentioned SBNHS, Science National Honor Society. They're also are participating in an E-Waste Elimination Tribe to get students to get, you know, come and donate their old electronics and find ways to recycle. So that's going to be part of the report. Thank you.
I got to tell you, it was a lot of information.
I know, I know. I really did throw a lot at you.
I was like, wait, what?
There is a lot this time of the year, so...
Yeah, it's just getting started. And we know it's always at the finish line. Once again, thank you all for coming out this evening and go ahead and get home safely. Yeah. All right, have a good one.
Thank you. Tommy, I'm texting you something about something coming up in April. If you could share it with Tyler and SAD group, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, next we have the president's report. So my president's report, April 10th, 2025. I would like to formally welcome Dr. Roberto Roberto here to our first meeting as our interim superintendent. Our board is very happy to work with someone with great experience and knowledge as we navigate this transition here. I'd also like to remind everyone that we will have a public input session as our board searches for a new permanent superintendent. Our families, students, and members of the community are invited to a meeting on Tuesday, April 22nd at 6:00 p.m. under PHS Anthony Commons. This session will be led by a representative of the New Jersey School Boards Association, who is assisting our board with this search process. This input session will gather information to be used to set critical criteria for the background training and experience necessary for the new superintendent. Additional sessions are being held in our schools to gain input from our district staff members. I want to wish all of our teachers and students a wonderful spring break. Rest your engines in your minds next week so that you come back and be refreshed and finish out the school year strong. There is still work to do before summer break, and we want you to end 2024-2025 school year on high. And that concludes my report. But I also want to just formally, let's give a round of applause to Dr. Roberto. And I fit it right in, and she's keeping right along with us. And we all going to break out our fans and say, where the fans at?
In June, our June meeting.
And next, we're going to...
Watch it, I'm overtired.
We're going to, now it's time for your first official superintendent report.
Thank the balcony and just take a moment. Um, I'd like to formally and publicly thank the Board of Education for giving me this opportunity. I shared with you that in just the time that I've been here in the last week, I needed this. I will serve you, but I, watching your teachers, your administrators, and these beautiful children, which children are beautiful everywhere, but the setting and the culture of the school district and the support, I have not heard one negative word since I arrived. And every word focuses on these children. And board members, you have a tremendous amount of support from the faculty. Special thanks to the cabinet. You're good people and you gave me so much time. You really did. And next week I'll be meeting, uh, the different departments as a whole. And right now I'm going and visiting each school. It has been a pleasure to follow in Dr. Ranali's leadership path. It is a pleasure. I, as a colleague, I have to acknowledge him. And the two words that come to mind with Dr. Ranali are his authenticity and his natural leadership. He doesn't manipulate people. He just does it and you want to follow him. And I can feel it in, in the district. So thank you. Visiting schools, I was at the , uh, Shore School with the municipal alliance. The sixth graders are getting cake, uh, because they were superior. And our children learned about vaping, social media, and the marijuana. It was an excellent program. While we were there, I got to meet our mayor and the police, uh, the councilman and the police. As Tyler and Tompe said, I went to SAD today while they were doing the, um, uh, chocolate walk. I met so many kids. Gabby, the leadership of the SAD group, the kids in the art rooms, uh, our principals there and the teachers. And that's the sense of community you feel. One of the things I was very proud of in the district was my first day when I was pulling into the district and the electric sign was there. And it proudly announced the honor, the month and what we're honoring during the month. New Jersey Jewish Heritage Month, Autism Awareness Month. You know, you can teach being inclusive, but you have to model it and send messages to kids. This is who we are. And I was so proud to see those items. I want to thank the parents who have emailed me. I got, uh, some emails from parents welcoming me and a couple of the parents said I taught them. Uh, one parent said, uh, my daughter was in your school and still remembers you. And that was a while ago. And two of the teachers here I taught. So it's a lot. I, uh, the Scataway Police, I have a meeting with them this week, their leadership. And, uh, also, um, we continue meeting as we continue planning. But I want to thank everybody for agreeing, uh, welcoming me to the district. I remind you to check out the superintendent's report. It's online and it's at the back table back there. It's filled with a lot of things. Tonight, we just saw one thing. Those children tonight, no teacher prompting them, show the power of public education. We influence children. And as Ms. Cherry said, every child, it's not just pick and choose. And on my email, I always quote Franklin Roosevelt, which I hope you all aren't too young to know who he was. But I love reading his books. And my favorite quote is, "We can't change the world for the child, but we can prepare the child for the world." And if we model good for these kids here tonight, they'll influence the world. They'll influence in positive. And also, they have a petting zoo. I don't know if you're aware of that. The third graders will have an opportunity to do that. Everything is in the superintendent's report. Again, thank you. I'm humbled, but I have to tell you, the work and service of children is nothing better. So thank you very much. And Gary, thank you in the back. One more item I have to mention, one more, and I'm so sad I regret. We have a little, a student in our school, Omar. I spoke to his mom today. What a wonderful woman. And when I called her, I said, "I'm not calling as a superintendent, I'm calling as a mom." I said, "Because what you're going through is hard. Omar needs a kidney transplant. And he's a student at the Shore School. There's an article in the superintendent's report and he's been in the newspaper and interviewed and he's been on television." These are hard things. I can't, if we just reflect upon, we know what that family's going. But the message as your interim superintendent, Omar, don't worry. You've got seven thousand kids and eleven hundred employees supporting you and the whole entire community. So Omar and his family, we're here for you. And it's not like convenience. So we wish you well. I know I speak for Omar.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Also listed in the superintendent report, there will be a fun day this, being able to invite Omar's family on April the twenty sixth. It's from ten to two, and I'm sure some of us will definitely be in attendance to be as well as others of the district. Um, next personnel and labor relations, Ms. Nancy Salgato-Cowen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Cherry.
Getting a little emotional there.
Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through C be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Secretary King take the role.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Snit?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Mrs. Salgato-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Curry?
Yes.
Ms. Curry.
Uh, committee reports. We're going to start off with fiscal planning and operations. Dr. Connors?
Uh, fiscal planning and operations committee met on Wednesday, April second to discuss twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget, capital projects, and more. Uh, on the budget, county approved the intended budget, including some minor adjustments to the preschool education aid budget. The budget will be advertised in advance of a public hearing by April twenty four. Uh, work on the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget book is ongoing. Uh, Mr. Olivera explained the tax levy incentive aid and recommended not pursuing it for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. The committee supported the recommendation. That is something new that the state is offering, and that is that you can go above your two percent cap if you qualify. Um, David Olivera explained, you know, that at this particular moment in time, not recommending that we pursue that. Facility capital projects, Scataway High School interior alterations, the contract has provided a schedule with a targeted completion date November twenty twenty five. Demolition work is scheduled to begin during, uh, spring break. Scataway High School anti-GM custodial upgrades, the contract reboot existing conditions and alternative custodial panel has been identified and approved. Leasher demolition will begin the last week of school. Delivery of new leashers is scheduled for August twelfth with installation needing three to four weeks. At that committee meeting, we also had some pictures of what they may look like. Uh, we picked a nice, it's a black color that goes in. It's, um, and that's the color of the day. It looks very nice with, uh, it fits into that. Scataway High School intercom PA clock system, district administration reviewed revised quote from the vendor and returned it for further refinement. Contract awards expected recommended, uh, recommended tonight. It's item J in your, uh, under fiscal is the recommendation. Uh, we came in at about one point, it was a lot of money, but it's going to be worth it. Um, came in at one point eight million. David had actually estimated two and a half, so, uh, we're in good shape there. And, um, it's much needed. It's the, uh, you know, separate, since we put those two buildings together, it's had separate , uh, public announcement system. So now, very disjointed, so now it'll be quite uniform. Solar panel removal, Talva Energy is working on bid specifications for removal of the solar panels at, at the high school. The district is targeting possible bid award at May eighth or beginning. Painting services for lithium board installation. There were five bidders for painting services for making board installation quotes reviewed and are being finalized with the vendor. Contract award resolution will be on April tenth. That's tonight's meeting, uh, with work being scheduled for the summer. Food services update. The district began negotiations on contract renewal with Naciros for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year and is awaiting proposal on the guaranteed term. Serving line equipment requirements for Shore School are being reviewed for possible bid report completed in the summer. Um, and David shared with us some of the pictures that of him serving some of the food out in our school and it's quite, because sometimes they do a theme day and it's good. Um, New Jersey School Business Legislative Update, Dr. Connors may noted that the Senate Budget Committee hearings began. The committee discussed special needs transportation and, uh, the big one coming out of the Senate Education Committee is the Teachers Pension and the DOD Fund to Reenact Enrollment Changes Legislation. Business Office Update, um, again, great idea. Investment account, committee reviewed the current balance on the March twenty twenty five, um, NJ Asset Revert, Revert Management Statement, uh, and the current interest rates. Uh, to, to date, we've, we've made about a million dollars. So it's been a very good, uh, copier contract and paper cuts. Uh, our previous five-year copier lease agreement terminated in November. Existing copier replaced the summer with copiers that each clearly offset the elimination of most printers. The district will also be implementing a paper cut system to better manage, uh, the district printing. The, um, New Jersey School Insurance Group Safety Grant, um, something I was actually in the board trustees of that a few years ago. They give out safety grants, um, to schools, um, and the district received transportation, so we're going to apply safety grant funding from, from them. Um, the district used funds to replace and add security cameras. In the past, um, as simple as also some of the funds can be used for, uh, if we have cracks in our sidewalks and some, uh, you know, uh, from the winter, um, that simple replacement of that, that concrete can save an accident, a possible, uh, you know, someone, uh, win a lawsuit. So this was, it's a great effort and we'll take advantage of this one. Wellness Committee, the committee conducted a walking challenge during March to its meeting next week to select its winners for the PTO day rep. Fellowship Farms Preschool Operations, that's, that's this building. Uh, Mr. Olivera informed the committee about to propose, um, expansion of preschool to add ten classrooms at Fellowship Farms, um, with the relocation of the, um, students acquiring life skills of the program to a yet- to-ter location. Resolution accepting a school's development authority grant that will cover forty percent of the estimated cost for the alterations. It's on tonight's budget, I believe it's item E or G, but, uh, and Madam President, that is the report of the fiscal planning and operations week.
Thank you, Dr. Connors. Support for Climate and Community Relations, Ms. Salgato-Cowen.
Uh, the Culture, Climate, and Community Relations Committee met on Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty five to discuss the positive messaging, community partnerships, and wellness initiatives. Under Positive Messaging, uh, Mr. Miller shared a slideshow presenting what the monthly themes were, quotes, social media posts, marquee images from, uh, the end of January through mid-March. Um, the February themes, um, surrounded around Black History Month, and the March themes were centered around Women's History Month. Um, we also reviewed what the upcoming month's themes were going to be, um, that we're highlighting, including Autism Awareness, um, and Acceptance Month, and New Jersey, uh, Jewish Heritage Month for April, and, um, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month for May. Um, and the community partnerships, um, the committee voted to revise, uh, goal number two related to the community partnership, removing the language, um, to be focused solely on partnerships with Rutgers University, since now our committee actually partners with many other groups besides, um, just the Rutgers. Um, so the goal now reflects the participation, including those outside, um, organizations. Dr. Gray shared information about some recent community partnerships, such as seventy-five girls from the high school that participated in the Women's Future Leadership Academy at Rutgers Business School, the thirty boys from across three middle schools that participated in a youth summit at Rutgers School of Engineering. The PHS Future Educators Association received training from Junior Achievement to lead, to lead the High School Heroes Program to teach age-appropriate lessons on financial literacy to third graders at Knollwood Eisenhower, um, elementary schools. Dates are being scheduled for both Randview and Randolphville later this school year. Uh, financial, uh, Financial Reality Fair for the PHS students will take place in May through a recent establishment of a partnership, which is a new partnership with the Affinity Federal Credit Union. Uh, the committee is still exploring possibilities for partnering with the local, um, Boy Scout troops to build outdoor libraries at schools across the district. Under Wellness, the Haven Family Night, um, was held, um, Thursday, January twenty third in PHS Commons. Several committee members did attend and shared their feedback. In partnerships with the Scataway Community Outward Commission, the committee is helping initiate an evening presentation to inform parents about potential signs of youth substance abuse. Um, I just want to stop in that moment for, uh, to give you guys an update. Since the, uh, on my last meeting on March the eighteenth, we were able to secure, um, the high school, um, PAC Center. On Tuesday, April twenty ninth, we will be hosting the In Plain Sight. Um, you know, Coalition, uh, is coming in. We were able to secure that. Um, we brought this up in this committee back in September when we met, and to actually be able to, uh, complete that, um, task before a full school year is over is really an accomplishment and a testament to both Dr. Gray, our administration, um, our team, all the parents on the committee. Um, I just want to thank everybody for that. Um, it's not, a committee works in, with all of its parts. It's not my idea. It's not the board's idea. It's what the community brought to us. Um, many of you who may have remember or have children who are older, this is, uh, something we had many years ago prior to our, um, you know, pandemic. We, uh, we had the, um, the Coalition, um, come in and really give us information about In Plain Sight, where you can see tapes, um, different, um, you know, things of that nature. So, um, since it had not been brought to our high school in many years, um, we were able to get that secured for April twenty ninth. That's a Tuesday. Um, I believe the time will be at six thirty, um, for families and students, uh, from grades fifth grade, um, all the way up to twelfth grade. The flyer will be forthcoming, uh, once we get our esteemed Gary Miller on that. And, um, I just wanted to make sure that, um, everyone here knew about that date and that we were able to secure that. Um, I guess it sort of falls under new business, but it was part of that wellness. So new business, the committee members shared information about, um, green light grant initiatives, which provide more equitable funding for school safety. And that is my report.
Thank you. Uh, Curriculum Committee met on Monday, April seventh, twenty twenty five to discuss school performance reports, STEM two D program at the high school, science and reading and more. J and J STEM two D program was presented by Jessica Pritchard and Robin Kay. Supervised volunteers for J and J will visit Scataway High School to work with students in the Engineering and Health Science Academies. It will allow professionals in the field to bring their expertise to our students. This opportunity was brought to us by the Health Science Academy panel. An engineering and capstone course will collaborate with academy coursework for an outstanding partner. for an outstanding partnership. In health and sciences, the volunteers will speak with the students on a cohort level, give a career profile and join a hands-on, mind-on activity. We are hoping to increase exposure to students that may have interests but are not in the academies. District and Service Day, which took place on March thirty-first, twenty twenty five. We had a very successful, as stated by Dr. Vaskerville, we had a very successful day with a large variety of sessions designed for our educators, including a literacy kickoff with McGraw-Hill. McGraw-Hill Open Court slash Study Sync was presented by Dr. Vaskerville, Renee Albediz, Galen Skene Cornwell of McGraw-Hill. We looked at a variety of options to move forward with the science of reading and our brain of McGraw-Hill on board. All teachers have materials in hands already. McGraw-Hill Open Court worked with grades K through five, including a blueprint for delivering a systematic teaching and learning, the differentiation for the reaching and relearning. A sample lesson structure includes foundation skills, reading and responding and language arts. The pathway to fluency includes letters, names, shapes, phonics awareness, phonics, decoding, encoding, word analysis, dictation and spelling. There is also reading and responding with knowledge building themes and scaffolding writing instructions. Professional development will be given for all our stakeholders. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school performance reports. The community will receive a letter this week detailing how we access NJ DOE school performance reports. They will reveal progress at the district and individual schools. The report is available on the district website. New to report this year are chronic absenteeism, ceiling of ill literacy, participation in visual performing arts K through twelve and a six-year graduation rate. Piscataway is doing well across the areas. Opt-out, the process for specific comprehensive health and physical education lessons. We have been transparent and have had less than three percent opt-out in the past. We will send a letter each year informing the families about these lessons and the timeframe. Go-Gad gifted and talented. This is something that's near and dear and so very important in Dr. Vaskerville. In the past, we have had no or very few multilingual learners or students with IEPs in these programs. This year, we have identified fifty-two. Yes, I say fifty-two special education students via the Go-Gad assessment. We are proud these students will be able to continue reaching their full potential. That is so critical and so very important to special education and to the students who have now been identified and can go forward with advancing and being challenged more, but most importantly, showing them their worth. Not allowing them to say, because I have an IEP or I'm a multilanguage learner, that I'm not capable or comparable of achieving more than anything anybody could ever have imagined. So I can only imagine the families that this affected once they were identified. The heartstrings, the tears, the happiness, but most importantly, the proud parents of these students for the work that they have put in, that it will now be acknowledged. So I have to say that part, even though it's not written on paper, it's okay.
Yeah.
The visual performing arts was by, given by Rebecca Stalaki. This Stalaki shared some of the events and achievements in the virtual and performing arts in March. We are proud of our district's accomplishments and excited to see what the rest of the year brings. What this report doesn't reflect, and most reports don't reflect because it's just a little snippet of it. What we do in the curriculum committee, the ambitions, the participation of the teachers and the parents and the directors of the departments is unbelievable. Some of the brainstorming that's done there, some of the ideas that are created there, but most importantly, everybody is there and they're giving it their all. They're excited to be there, but most importantly, they're excited to see the district's success and the advancements that we continue to take. Under Dr. Vaskerville's leadership, because this was his vision. This was his baby. This was his, let's go see, let's go do this special testing and look at what came out of it. So now these fifty-two additional flowers that have their own flower pot to sit in and grow at their own pace, their own way and whatever they create from it, they were given that opportunity because it is out-the-box thinking. That's what Piscataway is about, out-the-box thinking, not just saying status quo and following a path and putting a checkmark by everything. Everything doesn't need a checkmark in order to be successful. What your success shows is based upon what you see sitting in front of you, your student success, your parent's engagement with the student's success, but most importantly, identifying students and making sure if they're not engaged, let's get them engaged, which is what we're doing because now these students have been identified and now they're free to fly and continue on a path that no one knows, we're just hoping to lead them to. But they're being given the opportunity. If you're never given the opportunity, you can never know. So I'm super proud of us and like I say, hats off to the Dr. Gray.
Twenty twenty-five, twenty-five board goals. When we put them out under the bucket inspire, which is our core bucket, we did include this as a goal to have an emphasis on programs to seek those gaps. So it's nice to see that we are, we're doing what we're, you know, saying what we're going to do. And that just words on, they're not just words on this paper. They're one of our goals. The other thing is that myself, as a, you know, as a retired scientist, Colgate here in Piscataway, it is so nice to see that our Science Department Chair, you know, we talked about parent engagement. J&amp;J, this J&amp;J arrangement came because it was a parent of one of the students. And we had had it in the past where we'd go out to, you know, we have a lot of companies in Piscataway in the area, in this area. And we used to have some robust programs, but to see us again going out to seek opportunities, you know, in the health sciences with, with parents that work at J&amp;J that are willing to come in our schools and talk to our students is another, is another great thing. And then the last thing I wanted to say is that, you know, kudos to the Curriculum Committee and Dr. Vaskerville, and especially on, you know, language arts where we're now going with McGraw-Hill, which is the science of reading, which is a more, it's a science, it's a purposefully progressive program, the K through five, that includes all of these things rather than being isolated on one thing and another. And so there's kudos to everyone, so that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Connors. Next, I'm going to need a volunteer who wants to, uh, read the approval minutes. Just let Rebecca take it tonight. Bye, y'all. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Be resolved that the following minutes be approved as presented.
Please, oh, special meeting, March eleventh, twenty twenty five. Do you have a motion?
I will in the executive session.
Executive.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Executive session, March eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The insert approved. Here's another one on the backside. Turn it over. Okay. Business meeting, March thirteenth, twenty twenty five. And executive session, March thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Aye.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's approved. Public comments from the floor. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on the educational issues and school matters of community interest. In support of this position, the law established a period of public comment at every board meeting. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and address. Comments are limited, great in exploration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. The board may require that the individual registered to speak prior to the beginning of the meeting. Participants may submit written material in support of their position. All statements and or questions shall be directed to the presiding officer and no participant may address or question board members in the debate room. All speakers are required to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for dignity and privacy rights of others who legal rights may be affected. Please note while it is not the board's intention to stifle comments on matters of legitimate concern to the school community, the public should be aware that if their statement violates the rights of others under the law of a defamation and or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance before from their own legal advisor. The board is hoping, is there anyone sitting in the audience who wishes to come forward in public comments to commit a statement or to say something? If you do so, please come forward, state your name and your address and are free to speak. And I see no one coming forward and no one raising a hand. Can I have a motion to close public comments? Got a second?
Second.
Public comments closed. Discipline and operations on conference.
Be resolved, the following motions identified as items A through L be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Secretary, can you please take the role?
Mr. Nelsley?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mrs. Argot O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carey?
Policy, Ms. Smith?
Be resolved that the following motion identified as item A be approved as presented.
Mr. Secretary, can you take the role?
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Argot O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carey?
Curriculum.
Mr. Patel?
Be resolved that the following motions identified as item A and B be approved as presented.
Mr. Secretary, can you take the role?
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Argot O'Callaghan?
Yes.
And Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carey?
pupil services, Dr. Nelson.
Be resolved that the following motion identified as item A be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Secretary, can you take the role?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Argot O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carey?
Administrative and auxiliary, Ms. Stafford.
Be resolved that the following motions identified as A through D be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Secretary, can you take the role?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Argot O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carey?
Old business, I see Dr. Connors has his notebook out.
No, I'm, um, I don't have anything on the old. I have something on, I have something on old business. Yes, I want to just take a moment to thank the board for sponsoring the women to attend the second annual NJ SBA Second Annual Women's Leadership Conference. Both myself, three of us were able to attend. Dr. Gail Nelson, Ms. Anika Stafford and myself. The event was held on Friday, March the twenty-fourth. And both myself and Ms. Stafford are able to claim that we've been at both the first and the second annual. It was a great day for women empowerment, leadership and so on. Some of the, our keynote speaker for the day was Ms. Melissa McKinty of SHI International Corporation. And she shared with us about evolving from an educator to an ed tech leader and her experience through that and struggling in the real world and how it's worth it. Some of the breakout sessions included burnout to balance and how to be a whole person and approach your own mental and physical health. I attended a great session on building consensus on your board and other impossible tasks. There were many different, you know, breakout sessions, all things from like how to be, how, lessons how to learn to lead like a woman, which was very exciting. And as well as leading with courage, which is my absolute favorite, making your voice count. Never would, never ever would I have thought that I needed this lesson since I really have no problem with speaking my voice. But it was super encouraging. The woman who led that was Dr. Melissa Simmons of East Orange School District. And she was, she's actually a retired VA. And she gave us a lot of information about leading with courage and your voice and just really timely and important messages that also will help our esteemed gentlemen of the board as well as women. But seeing it was held in the month of March and it being Women's History Month, it was, it was very exciting. It was just a great thing. And I want to thank the board again for sponsoring us, doing that. And I hope we are able to attend our third annual next year in March. So that's what I have on old business. Yeah.
Your business?
Madam, uh, here's like, here at the local level in Piscataway, first of all, is that we're all liaisons through our schools. We got a list of events, okay? Take a look at that event and make an effort to get out to the schools. This is under a heading of community engagement. Sports senior nights, get a list of all those sports senior nights. If you get a chance, go to one of those as well. The other thing that I'm going to call the board later is that we also do every year is we participate in Memorial Day Parade sponsored by the American Legion and we march in that parade. I have told the organizers that, I spoke to Madam President, to the Vice President, we probably have enough people to do it again this year. We wear, we have our hats, we have our shirts, we walk in the parade, we hand out pencils, people see the Board of Education. It's a great event. At the county level, which I've been active in the, in the past, is Middlesex County School Board Association has its county meeting May twenty-first. There, at this particular meeting, you know, I'm an executive officer of the New Jersey School Board Associations. Sometimes I get, I get to go all over the state with readings at these county meetings. This particular month is where people get their service reports. That is, you know, it was every five, 10, 15 years. I'm expecting myself to probably get a 15-year one in Middlesex. We also honor the Teacher of the Year. Getting on to the state, the New Jersey School Board Association, very exciting because we often discuss about what we can do. And as you can see, woman in leadership was one of the ideas and what, what's happening all over the state. The other thing is I'm the delegate assembly representative from Piscataway to the New Jersey School Board Delegate Assembly. That May tenth meeting is where school districts get to put in belief statements or resolutions to try and get that into the New Jersey school boards overall belief statements book that we use to advocate our legislatures with. Again, I vote for us, but I, I've never had a pathway to discuss like whether or not I'll vote yes or no. I just do it that day. But what I'm trying to say is this year I'm getting, we have three resolutions and I'll be polling people about how to vote on them. I'll give you an example. A, a district from, in, in Woodbury somewhere in the state feels that esports now the students should get varsity letters. So they want that in, in there and then we'll, that's an example. The other thing is the, the work, the main thing is the workshop. The workshop, like the Jersey School Board Association Workshop is in October. Most of us will be going. Okay. And then last, what I'm going to end on is that I'm extremely grateful, extremely grateful to be so involved in school boards, even at the national level. I just got finished with two trips. I attended the Consortium of State School Board Associations, which is, has twenty-five states across the United States. And I attended their meeting in Atlanta. And then following that, this past weekend, I attended the National School Boards Association meeting representing the New Jersey School Boards Association. And the kinds of things that they discuss at the national level are basically a lot of federal advocacy priorities. And you talked about believing in public education. The main thing you're prioritizing, K through twelve, public education. Correct. The main advocacy piece that often we talk about is that Congress started nineteen seventy-six, Individual Disabilities Education Act should be forty billion, but it's only at fifteen billion. That's the money that goes out to the states that pays for our school psychologists, that pays for all of those programs. And so we advocate for that. We advocate for increased funding that. We advocate for mental health services. We advocate for child nutrition programs. We advocate for even, there may be teacher bills that, that the minimum salary should be sixty thousand across the country, et cetera. So that's the kinds of things that we, they do there. And I'm very proud to be associated with that, representing New Jersey schools. And with that, of course, I didn't want to go there and not bring anybody back.
Souvenirs.
So, so everybody that watched, anybody that watched one, here's the bag I wrapped on the way out.
You know I want a bag, Tom.
See, I thought of you guys. So I have bags in the conference. It's going to be a while. I only have a few hats.
I love those hats. I, I love this guy.
Hats, guys. And this is, I just also wanted to pass these out. That these are things that I have in my backpack. in my back pocket for national school boards. And then the last thing.
Pass down a hat for Gail. Gail's interested in a hat, please.
And see, what often we don't celebrate too, we don't even celebrate, we don't even celebrate.
There's two different hats.
The last thing I wanted to say is the National School Boards Association has other things, has other things associated with it, and one of them, one of them is the, let's see.
No, absolutely not.
How can someone bite over that hat?
Had it open.
All right.
The other thing is, the National School Boards associated with something called the Council of School Board Attorneys, and we have someone in the room by the name of David Rubin, who is in Atlanta. He received from the National School Board Association Council of School Attorneys with our greatest appreciation. We hereby present David G. Rubin for your generous support and willingness to contribute to the professionalism of our members. You are being honored with much appreciation and gratitude to David Rubin. So, we have mapped it.
That's a gold board. All right. Well, David, David, you got to do this. You got to be like this.
Well deserved, David.
And that's all my business.
Same time it was worth giving you more than three minutes. Madam President, I'm sorry. I also have a new business, I also have a new business.
Nancy Starks, I'm calling you.
Okay. Is that, I don't know if it was good business, old business, I'm probably out of order, but just an update on the superintendent search and where we are with that. I know you had mentioned it in your president's report. Since I'm leading that effort, I just want to remind everyone, and you know, rightfully so, Madam President welcomes our new interim superintendent who's here for us, Dr. Roberto. We gave her our claps. We also acknowledged our outgoing superintendent, Dr. Rennelli. We were able with our board to complete and compile a survey of his efforts, and I will be reviewing that with him shortly, once he gets settled in where he's at. And in terms of finding a permanent superintendent, we are, as we all know, partnered with the NJSPA, the New Jersey School Board Association, and they have put out the public notice for the job. The deadline is going to be for applications, 5:00 p.m. on Friday, April 25th, so that's coming up quickly. If anybody is aware of people out there that might be interested, please go to the New Jersey School Board's website and apply. The superintendent notice is there, it's been sent out to you guys, I won't belabor it, but the most important thing, especially at a public meeting like this and being taped, hi friends, is that the superintendent search, public input session, this is your opportunity as a constituent here in Piscataway, whether you have children in our schools, had children in our schools, were an educator, not an educator, just a lifelong Piscataway person, or if you're just here from last month, you get to come to this very important meeting on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, and no board members will be there. No, Dr. Roberto, I'm not sure if she will be there as well, nope, none of us that are sitting here will be there, just you, just you. So, it will be held at the Anthony's Commons, it's at 6:00 p.m., and it will be the New Jersey School Boards there getting as much and any input from all of our different constituents as well as our, what am I looking for the word?
Stakeholder.
Thank you, thank you. I'm like, I can't think of that word. All right. And that's pretty much where we are with that. Once that process is done, there will also be input sessions for all of the teachers, administrators, et cetera, and hopefully we'll be well on our way to having a new superintendent in 2026 is our goal. If we get them sooner, I'm sure that Dr. Roberto would not be upset.
No, you need to get them as soon as you can. No, I have nothing to do with that.
So, so that is, I think that was supposed to be old business, I'm sorry, but I think it was out of order.
It's on record, don't worry about it.
Okay. So, old and new business from your Vice President, Nancy Salgado-Cowen.
Cowen. Thank you. But you know, this is an exciting time for your district. I've been in interim a number of times. This is exciting. It really is.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. All in favor? We are a chair.
Thank you.
Did everybody did a better?